Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Bristol, Tennessee Regional Planning Commission, February the fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. It's the President's Day edition. First thing we're gonna do is have our roll call.
Kelly Graham.
Here.
Malin Luttrell.
Here.
Mark Webb.
Here.
Margaret Fire Robin.
Here.
Jason Boer.
Here.
Takai Shu.
Here.
Thank you. Joel Staiton is here. Scott Gaynor.
Here.
Kevin Buck. No Kevin Buck.
All right, I'd like to introduce Ms. Smith, our city attorney, for an announcement and discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you all know by now, Governor Lee has allowed us to meet electronically by suspending the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, to the extent necessary to allow that until at least the end of February. One condition of meeting electronically is that if you're attending by audio only, as I am right now, I don't have good video, I apologize. You're asked to identify yourselves by name and position when you speak, such as by saying this is City Attorney Danielle Smith. In order to proceed with meeting electronically, the Planning Commission should make a determination that meeting electronically is necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans in light of the COVID- nineteen outbreak. If the members feel they need to discuss this, they should do so at this time. If they do not need any discussion because they've had previous discussions, then they should go ahead and vote as to whether an electronic meeting is necessary. The vote should be done by roll call.
Does anybody want to discuss the necessity of having this meeting electronically? Hearing none, roll call.
Kelly Graham.
Yes.
Malin Luttrell.
Yes.
Mark Webb.
Yes.
Margaret Fire Robin.
Yes.
Jason Boer.
Yes.
Takai Shu.
Yes.
Joel Staiton is yes. Scott Gaynor.
Yes.
And Kevin Buck is not participating because he is not here.
In front, thank you. In front of you are the minutes of the January twenty-fifth meeting. Is there any discussion or changes on the meeting? If not, we're looking for a motion.
Motion to approve, Malin.
Mark seconds.
All right, we have a motion to session in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion that's on the floor? Hearing none, roll call.
Kelly Graham.
Yes.
Malin Luttrell.
Yes.
Mark Webb.
Yes.
Margaret Fire Robin.
Yes.
Jason Boer.
Yes.
Takai Shu.
Yes.
Joel Staiton is yes. Scott Gaynor.
Yes.
And Kevin Buck is not present.
Thank you very much. Next up on the agenda is unscheduled comments from the public. What we have are two different times during our meetings when we will hear from the public. If there is an item that is on the agenda and you want to speak, you are allowed to speak at that time. But right now, what we have is the unscheduled comments. So if anybody from the public wants to address us at this point in time, I believe we have a mechanism set up for somebody to phone in if they want to speak during the unscheduled comments.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if the public wishes to speak, if they will dial in the phone number on their screen that's been scrolling on the bottom, and there will be one posted on the screen, the same number. So at this time, Mr. Barney, if you want to.
We're now back live. There were no call-ins on unscheduled comments from the public. We will have another time in just a short bit where we will ask for comments from the public again if they want to call back in on scheduled business. As far as the attendees of the meeting, Kevin Buck is now online with us and will be marked present for this meeting. Old business, we have none. New business, street abandonment request. Who has that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, up for consideration is abandonment of a portion of an existing street, Willow Street off of Kentucky Avenue. Mr. David Metzger will give you the presentation on this item.
All right, thank you, Tim. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
We do.
Okay. Appearing on your screen is an overhead aerial photograph that illustrates what we're gonna be discussing this evening. The Living Water Baptist Church is located at eighteen oh six Kentucky Avenue, which is near the bottom of the yellow polygon that you see on your screens. Over the years, they have acquired other pieces of property in that neighborhood to the point now that they completely around the dead end westernmost block of Willow Street west of Kentucky Avenue, which is the polygon shown in light blue on your screen. They're wanting to continue to develop their church property with some more infrastructure, the Fellowship Hall and this sort of thing. And so they approached the city late last year to see if they could request the abandonment of this block of Kentucky Avenue, I'm sorry, this block of Willow Street west of Kentucky Avenue. Of the numerous pieces of property that the church already owns, one contains the sanctuary at eighteen oh six Kentucky Avenue, which is down at the lower end of the screen. They have a parking lot at three hundred Willow Street. They have existing residences at three oh four and three oh eight Willow Street. Right now, one's being used for Fellowship Hall and one's being used for storage. The map shows that there was a house at three oh nine Willow Street at the dead end. It has since been demolished. And then they own two vacant parcels on the west side of Kentucky, north of Willow Street at seventeen sixteen and seventeen twenty. There was a house at seven sixteen. It was demolished about three or four years ago. So they came to the city and asked about having the right-of-way abandoned. And this is sort of like the abandonment we did a few months ago on Leona Street, that because of the way that the properties are arranged, you cannot do the abandonment without a combination plat, and you can't do a combination plat without the abandonment. It's a chicken and the egg proposition, because if you were to abandon this right-of-way before all the properties were combined, several of the properties like three oh four Willow Street and three oh nine Willow Street would not have any public road frontage, which is a violation of state law. So what we're showing here on this screen is what we've worked out with the applicants there from the church and with their surveyor, Mr. John Mize. We did a utility search on this right-of-way, and it turns out that all of the typical public utilities except natural gas exist in this block of Willow Street. You have underground and you have overhead. And so typically, when we would abandon a right-of-way, we would keep the entire right-of-way as a stormwater and utility easement, so that could we never know what the future might bring. However, if we were to do this in this situation, this might adversely impact the church, because if we could only keep the utility easements in a portion of the right-of-way, that would allow them some setback relief as to how they could arrange the structures to be constructed on their property. So after looking at the utilities in the field and their locations and this sort of thing, in the end, what we're looking at is, if you look at the map on your screen, the red polygon is, of course, the church properties. You'll see there in the old Willow Street right-of-way that's being proposed for abandonment, the light gray area on the bottom, which is twenty-five feet of the fifty-foot width, this is where all the utilities are. So if we were to abandon this right-of-way, this twenty-five foot that's shown in light gray would be kept as utility easement. Also have to keep six feet of property on the three hundred, three oh four, and three oh eight Willow Street as a utility easement, because we won't try to keep ten foot each side of all the utilities, and the overheads are very close to the edge of the right-of-way. The black area at the northern part of Willow Street contains no utilities, and is far enough away from the utilities that we do not have to retain any stormwater or utility easements. So that would afford the church some setback relief as to how they do their structures if this property were to be abandoned. The other easement that would have to be dealt with is a private easement. If you look at the left-hand end of the light gray polygon, you'll see a dash line that runs down to the property at sixteen ninety-two Arkansas Avenue, which is a residence. Their water meter is in Willow Street, and that dash line represents the private utility line. So it also have to be a private utility easement running from that water meter down to the property at sixteen ninety-two Arkansas Avenue. So we've been working with Mr. Mize, their surveyor, and putting the combination plat together, and all the different pieces and parts that have to happen simultaneously. We did also consider, it's not part of your packet, because this happened since your agenda item was put together, but there is a street light on Willow Street that, of course, right now, the city is paying for because it's a public street. And the church has agreed to take that over as a private security light if it were to be abandoned. So we would come off of the city's charge, you know, go on to the church's charge. As far as public input is concerned, none was sought, none was required, because the church completely encapsulates the right-of-way. So at this point, the summary and staff recommendation is as follows. Staff does recommend that the public right-of-way of Willow Street west of Kentucky Avenue be abandoned, which is fifty-foot wide and approximately a hundred and fifty-five foot deep. And we would retain a stormwater and utility easement on the southern half of that, as well as a six-foot strip adjacent to that on the south side of Willow Street. They would also be required to keep that private utility easement for that water line going to the house on Arkansas Avenue. So if you have any questions for me, I'll try to answer for you what I can.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. John Mize is in attendance on the church's behalf, if you have any questions for him at the appropriate time.
Thank you very much. I assume there would be no public input on this. But if there is anybody that wants to do public input, please call that number right now. We're not gonna take a pause during this unless there is a call that comes in. Now then, let's turn it over to Planning Commission and any questions?
Yeah, I have one, David. The easement portion that you're speaking of, if I understand it correctly, there could never be any construction on that portion of the property.
Just on the portion that's shown in light gray on your map on your screen, the portion that's colored black would not have any utility easements, and so construction could go there, subject to the appropriate setbacks.
Would that be left as paved area or to be grassed area, or just whatever they wanted to do with it, I guess?
It'd be up to the church. It depends on how they decide to internally lay out their configuration of their buildings.
Okay, thank you.
David, could they put a parking lot over that or in that area? They could do that, couldn't they?
We do have utility easements that are underneath parking lots, but you have to make allowances for that. For instance, you wouldn't want to put a landscaped area with trees on top of the utility easement and such as that. But just to have one that has pavement on top of it isn't necessarily an insurmountable task.
Okay.
So just David and Tim, just summarizing or whatever, it appears that this is pretty amiable on both sides, that what they wanted to do and what we need to retain is pretty successful in working things out. Is that the big picture?
I'd say that's a fair summary. Since the church surrounds the right-of-way in its entirety, having a right-of-way that does not serve any additional properties doesn't serve a public purpose.
Thanks.
Are there any more questions at this point in time? I'm gonna assume we have not had any call-ins for public comment. Do we have any question for the surveyor? Hearing, seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the staff's recommendation on the abandonment of the Willow Street section west of Kentucky.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Malin.
All right, we have a motion and we do have a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Kelly Graham.
Yes.
Malin Luttrell.
Yes.
Mark Webb.
Yes.
Margaret Fire Robin.
Yes.
Jason Boer.
Yes.
Takai Shu.
Yes.
Joel Staiton is yes. Scott Gaynor.
Yes.
Kevin Buck.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. We appreciate it.
And, Mr. Chairman, this recommendation will be forwarded to City Council, and they will be on their work session on the twenty-third of this month for any questions they may have, and then it'll be placed on their March second agenda for consideration on first reading.
Okay, favors, let me ask you a question. We've got three rezonings coming up next. Do you want to pause on each of those three, or do you want to issue a blanket invitation for anybody from the public that wants to address these, to call in now and put them on hold?
One, appreciate John Mize, you attending, and Shane will promote, demote you back down sort of into an attendee. Certainly appreciate you here to answer any questions that the commission may have had. And then I see coming up, we can do the pause. I think the easiest way to do it is just pause for the thirty-five seconds.
On each rezone? Okay.
That's the easiest way, and that way, you've got a period that they can call in, a specific period, instead of minutes that they can call in, so.
And Tim, if you don't mind, please explain why we're doing it differently this month.
The governor issued an order back, and Malin or Margaret can help me, but back earlier in the year, that it might have been in December, that attendance over ten people was not allowed. And we can't guarantee how many people would show up to the annex for a meeting. So we had to shift it how we do our electronic meetings to allow for people to call in, and it was advertised that way. But we do, like I said, have one property owner associated with the county's rezoning. They are in attendance here at the annex, because they, just because they weren't sure their computer could work with Zoom well. So they are here, the actual property owners, so, for that, so. But that is why we are doing it, because we can't guarantee that we could keep participation at the annex under ten people, so.
The number they call in, is it on constant scroll on the TV?
Yes, sir.
Is I looking over at the TV? It's not scrolling.
It should be. It's supposed to be.
There it comes.
Yeah.
Okay. So then, we will start with the rezoning request. The first one up is one twenty-one Bluff City Highway.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and Garrett Addington is here in attendance on the Zoom meeting. I see he is logged in. Anyway, this was, came about, the Development Services mistakenly issued an electronic message board permit to Mr. Addington back in November, December, late November, early December of last year. And then he's currently zoned B one B and not allowed to have an electronic message board, but it was mistakenly issued. Fortunately, he hadn't put the sign up yet, but in looking at it and looking at where this property is located, you know, I know Mr. Addington really wants to have an electronic message board on the property. And the property, he, like I said, zone B one B cannot have an electronic message board right now. But the people, the whole, everybody across Bluff City Highway could have an electronic message board if they chose to and applied for it. And the school to the south of him could also have an electronic message board, so. It really makes, didn't make much sense why he couldn't have an electronic message board at that location. And we did look at the zoning and looked at our future land use plan, and the staff felt like the B three zoning was applicable. I'm sort of still in Sheriff's Thunder here, but not, the property, the size of the property limits the, what could be put on that property, just the sheer size of it. So not all uses would be accommodated by the size of the property that would be allowed in B three. And being on the main Bluff City Highway quarter and the opposite side of the street, zone B three, we felt like this was appropriate zoning. And with that segue in, I will turn it over to Ms. Young to give the presentation.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Since Tim stole my thunder here, I'll go through this briefly. But we are reviewing tonight a request to rezone from B one B to B three. As Tim said, for Garrett Addington, who's with us this evening, is the applicant. And the parcel or the address is one twenty-one Bluff City Highway. This parcel is approximately point four oh three acres. And the current zoning is B one B. Just a quick little recap of the rezoning process. The task and ask for the Planning Commission tonight here is to review the application and to make a recommendation at the conclusion of your discussion that will then be forwarded to City Council. City Council will hear this item at two meetings, so they'll have a first reading on the rezoning request. And then they'll hold a public hearing and second reading at a second meeting. So this will take approximately three months of meetings. If approved at second reading, the rezoning will become effective seventeen days after the second reading. So that's the rezoning process for anybody that is watching at home. This is the process we'll take with this rezoning request. So here is a map that shows the zoning in the area. The parcel that is requested for rezoning is in yellow, hatched in yellow. That is zoned B one B, so the darker pink is B one B. So in behind is B one B, and then going up towards Tennessee High School on the right side of the road is zoned B one B. If you look across the street, though, you'll see just across the street is zoned B three. So that portion of the quarter is zoned B three. And then to the south of this property is Haynesfield Elementary, zoned R two. And as Tim was saying, the R two zoned parcel, which is the school, and all the B three that's across the street, those all would be eligible for electronic message boards under our current sign regulations. So the mix of, so here, well, I'll just say the mix of land use here in the area is office, commercial, institutional, and then just directly behind this parcel, you do have a single-family residence, but it is zoned B one B. So here are a couple photos. I'm sure those of you that go up and down Bluff City Highway about have seen what a great job Mr. Addington's doing with sprucing up this building. So here's the building looking northeast across Bluff City Highway. And then there's one other photo. This is looking southeast from the other corner of the building. And I'll go through quickly as we do. What are the permitted uses and special use permitted items in each zone? So in B one B, you do have as permitted uses, single-family homes, duplexes, some limited retail trade, finance and insurance, professional offices. You have some limited healthcare and social assistance businesses. You can have a full-service restaurant. And then some religious grant-making civic professional and similar organizations. The special use permit items, those are those private and public utility buildings, churches, daycares, and then some of your private golf, swim, tennis clubs, and assisted living facilities in the B one B. In the B three zone, I certainly won't read all these to you, but you can see that the B three zone is that. In the B3 zone, I certainly won't read all these to you, but you can see that the B3 zone is that general business zone, which expands the type of businesses that can be in the general business zone. As you can see, if this rezoning was approved, it would allow for some expanded use of that building should Mr. Addington take on another tenant or decide to do something different in the future. And there would be some flexibility just with the uses allowed in the B3 zone. Special use permit items are electronic assembly operations, hospitals, the private sports clubs, warehouses, adult entertainment establishments. You can do multifamily by special use permit currently in the B3 zone. So here's a excerpt from our future land use map. What is in red or pink is indicated to be commercial. It's a commercial land use designation. So this area is well suited for a change in zoning to the B3 zone. So the map itself supports this rezoning request. We also look at policies that accompany the future land use map. So here are two of them applied, policy three and policy six, which states that we should look to sustain existing commercial areas while providing for adequate and compatible growth and expansion. And then we should also, in policy six, encourage the redevelopment of underutilized land and buildings to capitalize on existing infrastructure and services. So the, the future land use map plan and policy analysis does support the rezoning request. And we did notify adjacent property owners as we always do, so they know of the time, date and occurrence of the meeting. There also was a public notification sign that was placed on the property. Thus far, we have only received one telephone call on this project and that was a person that was really just inquiring and curious. No statement of opposition or support was given. So the staff recommendation to the Planning Commission tonight is due to the commercial zoning on part of this subject parcel and on surrounding parcels combined with the commercial corridor that parcel is located on. And the fact that it agrees with that future land for the Planning Commission to send a favorable recommendation to City Council on this request. And then the note at the bottom is just to remind that the City Council, of course, does take seriously the Planning Commission's recommendation on rezonings. That the City Council is not bound by the recommendation and the City Council takes the final action to approve or disapprove the rezoning request. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Going to ask Plan Commission of any questions of staff, but while we're doing that, if anybody from the public wants to discuss this, please go ahead and call in now the number that is on the, the screen. So, any, any questions of city staff? I have, have one sheriff. Looking at the picture of the current property, there's already some signage. I can't tell what kind of sign that is. Would this be in addition to that or would the current signage go away with the new signage if approved?
Um, my understanding is that a portion of that sign will be replaced with the electronic message board.
Mr. Mr. Addington's on here and he can answer better than any of us, but it is a total refurbishment of the sign replacement. I mean, it'll be in the general location, maybe utilizing the existing pole and some framing, but it would be a total change out of the sign and a portion of that, if approved, would be an electronic message component to it, a portion of the sign. Is that correct, Mr. Addington?
That, that is correct. Yeah, the only thing that's going to be remaining from the previous structure is the, the pole and the base for that monument. So everything else will be brand new and I'd be glad to follow up with a picture to give a better idea. I would show it here if I could, but.
No, that's okay, Garrett. I was just curious if it's going to be in addition to what you had or, or looking at removing that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions at this time? Okay, what we're going to ask for at this point in time is any comments from the public. Have we had any calls to come in or do we, do you feel like we need to pause?
Uh, I would just take a 30 second, whatever the pause time is, 30 seconds here, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we had no input from the public on this particular item. So what we'll do at this point in time is ask for a motion.
Motion to approve the zoning permit.
To City Council. This is Mark.
All right, Malin, Malin got there first. Do you want to make that a second, Dr. Webb?
Sure will.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion from Planning Commission? Roll call.
Kelly Graham.
Yes.
Malin Luttrell.
Yes.
Mark Webb.
Yes.
Margaret Fire Robin.
Yes.
Jason Boer.
Yes.
Takashiu.
Yes.
Joel Staten is yes. Scott Gaynor.
Yes.
Kevin Buck.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And again, that did not rezone the property. That merely throws it over to the City Council side for them to take the action as pointed out by that slide that was put up earlier.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it will go to the City Council at their work session once again on the 23rd of February. Just if they have questions or want to discuss it with staff. And then it will appear on their March 2nd for consideration on first reading meeting and that will be followed by the April 6th or whatever that date is, City Council meeting for public hearing and second reading if they pass it on first reading. And thank you, Mr. Addington, for being on the Zoom call. Appreciate you very much.
I appreciate you guys having me. Thanks for the support and I look forward to the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will now move on. We have two Sullivan County rezoning requests.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and in attendance tonight, should you all have questions on either of these requests. They came to us from Sullivan County, a separate request is Mr. Broyles and Mr. Cox. I had to, couldn't read my own handwriting there for a second. But they are in attendance at the annex. If y'all have any questions for them, we can get them in front of a computer so they can speak to you. Otherwise, they don't wish to speak unless you have specific questions for them. But this is rezoning, the first item up for consideration of is rezoning of 261 Broyles Lane. And this is in our urban growth boundary, but outside the corporate limits, so. Because it's in the urban growth boundary, this Planning Commission, being a regional Planning Commission, any rezoning requests that come through the county are put, placed before you all for a recommendation to the County Commission. With that, I'll let Ms. Young give the presentation.
Thank you. So tonight, the requested rezoning request here is to rezone from the Sullivan County R1 zone to the Sullivan County A1 zone. And the owner of this property, this first rezoning request, the owner is Gary and Joyce Cox. The location is 261 Broyles Lane. The acreage here, and this is the two parcels, is approximately 10.9 acres. Here we have a slide again that just shows the process. This one's a little bit different since it is in the city's urban growth boundary. So what happens here is the Planning Commission, the Bristol Planning Commission tonight will discuss and make a recommendation on this rezoning request. The rezoning request is then forwarded to the Sullivan County Commission for a final decision. So the Sullivan County Commission is not bound by the recommendation and does have the final say-so to either approve or disapprove the rezoning. So here is a location map showing the two parcels up for this first rezoning request. So those are outlined in red. Here is a zoning map that shows the zoning of this area. So you can see there is a lot of R1 zone in this area. There is some R3 in the vicinity of this rezoning request, so an existing mobile home park. There is some M1, which is an industrial zone that abuts the property. And then there is some A1 that is across the road from this property. The predominant land use in the area is single-family residences. You do have some vacant land and then you do have the business use that exists on the property that's zoned M1. Just a quick summary of some of the permitted uses in the R1 and A1 zones. They are very, they are very similar, but you have single-family detached dwellings allowed in both administrative services, libraries, essential services, public transport, transport utility and communications, electric, gas substations, water tanks, commercial golf courses. The A1 zone does allow duplex dwellings and it does allow more intensive agricultural use. But other than that, they are very similar. The next slide shows, this shows a comparison and I'll let the applicant speak to this if you all do have questions about it, but in talking with the applicant, what has prompted the rezoning request is this property is has been used as a family farm for some time, so they've been farming this land. I think there are several family members that live in this area. And they do want to build a larger accessory structure to be used for their equipment and farming uses. So the A1 zone actually allows for a larger accessory structure that they, they need for their farming uses than the current R1 zone does. This is what has, in some ways, prompted the rezoning request. So we just put this slide up here to show the comparison of those accessory structure allowances. And if y'all remember, it was about this time last year that Sullivan County did amend their zoning regulations to change this accessory structure allowance. So just a little information there and background on this request. And so here is a picture of the driveway and entrance to, to this property. It's certainly beautiful out there, but kind of hilly, so tough to get some good pictures of the property. The next slide shows our future land use map. So this indicates that the area will be developed primarily as low-density residential. I'm sorry, y'all. It's nice to have mute and not have to cough in person here. But the, the area does show low-density development. So staff does feel that the requested rezoning agrees with the land use plan and policy as the A1 zone supports slow-density development. So today, we've received no public input on this request. And the staff recommendation tonight is for the Planning Commission to send a favorable recommendation to the County Commission for this request.
Thank you very much. Getting another big drink of water there. All right, we, we do have the, first off, if anybody wants, from the public wants to address this, please call in now the number that is on your screen. That being said and done, the owner of the property is here in case we want to ask him any questions. So, is there anybody from the Planning Commission that has any questions either for staff or for the owner? Seeing no request, why don't we then see if there's any comments from the public? Shall we handle that?
Yes, Shane, if you could take us offline and count us.
Thank you. We're now back live. There were no call-ins from the public to address this. Again, I'll ask Planning Commission, do you have any questions of staff or the owner? Hearing, seeing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve or send a favorable recommendation to council for 261 Broyles Lane rezoning request.
Thank you, Mr. Boer. Appreciate that. Is there a second?
Second.
I will second it.
We're going to give that second to Margaret. She was faster.
Joel, Joel, you can have the next one.
Thank you.
Oh, he's against that one. Okay. We have a motion in seconds. Any discussion for the motion that's on the floor? Hearing, seeing none, roll call.
Kelly Graham.
Yes.
Malin Luttrell.
Yes.
Mark Webb.
Yes.
Margaret Fire Robin.
Yes.
Jason Boer.
Yes.
Takashiu.
Yes.
Joel Staten is yes. Scott Gaynor.
Yes.
Kevin Buck.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next Sullivan County rezon request is Brown Drive.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, similar request for this. This would go from R1A to A1. This is Sean Broyles and he is in attendance tonight if y'all have any questions for him. But this is a request to make, to rezone the property to A1 at 227 and 229 Brown Drive. With that, I'll let Ms. Young give the presentation.
Thank you, Tim. So this one is going to seem very familiar to you. The request here is also to go from R1, R1 to A1. The property address is 227 and 229 Brown Drive. And in, in total, the four parcels represented here in this request are approximately 12.96 acres. Again, the process here is for the Planning Commission, Bristol Planning Commission, to make a, a recommendation that will be forwarded to the Sullivan County Commission for final decision. Here is a map, a location map that shows the property. So if you all remember from the slides we just looked at, we're actually adjacent to the slides that were just reviewed. So these are the next four parcels over. And then if we go to the next map, you'll see the re- you'll see the re, the zoning of the area. Again, it's got R1. And then this parcel actually is adjacent to the R3 piece that has the mobile home park. There is also, again, A1 and M1 in the area. Here are the summary of permitted uses. Again, this hasn't changed from, from what we looked at in the last rezoning application. So very similar permitted uses, with the exception of the duplex dwelling allowed in A1, and then the intensive agricultural use is allowed in A1. Again, this is the slide that shows the difference in the accessory structure allowances of each zone. So the A1 does allow a bigger structure. Then here are a few shots that were actually provided by the applicant to us. So we appreciate him for sharing these photos of his property. So this, this shows the agricultural nature of the land here. And then we'll conclude with the future land use map. So again, it does show this area slated for low density residential development. And staff feels that the requested rezoning agrees with this plan as Sullivan County A1 zone does provide for low density, single family development. Again, from a public comment perspective, we have no, we have not received any public input on this request. And just like the last application, the recommendation to the planning commission tonight is to send a favorable recommendation to the county commission for this request.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Again, if there's anybody from the public that wants to address this, please make a phone call now to the number that's on the screen. That being said and done, is there anybody on the planning commission that likes, would like to ask any questions at this time? You have both city staff and you have the owners of the property present to answer any questions. Nothing? All right, let's do the pause while we.
Kelly. Just wanted, just a point of clarification. I just happened to notice on the cover letter of the packet in the request section, looking over to the right, it's saying B1 to A1. That should be what, R1, I believe?
Are you talking the staff memo?
Yes.
Oh, the request line, that's a typo, yes.
You're correct.
That's R, okay. I just want to make sure. Yeah.
I had to find, to look about three times to find it.
I mean, it just, I just noticed it and I thought, throw it out there, just clarification. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's do the pause while we see if anybody wants to call in. Thank you very much. We're live again. There were no phone calls from the public. So we'll turn to planning commission, give you one last opportunity to ask staff or the owners any questions? Hearing seeing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to send a favorable recommendation for 227 Brown Drive to the Sullivan County Commission.
I will second it.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion with the motion that's on the floor? Hearing seeing none, roll call.
Kelly Graham.
Yes.
Malin Luttrell.
Yes.
Mark Webb.
Yes.
Margaret Fire Robin.
Yes.
Jason Brewer.
Yes.
Takashi.
Yes.
Joel Staten is yes. Scott Gaynor.
Yes.
Kevin Buck.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our final item tonight under new business is annexation on Weaver Pike.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, up for consideration is the annexation of property located at 2467 Weaver Pike. And Mr. Josh Roberts has, and his wife, lived there and have requested annexation so that they can take, have the amenities of all the city services that all the population of the great city of Bristol enjoy. The property, once again, is located 2647 Weaver Pike. It's approximately 1.49 acres. This map shows it in yellow, the requested property. So you can see it over here. The property in pink, the shaded in pink, including Weaver Pike, is currently inside the corporate limits. So they are contiguous to the corporate limits right across the road from the entrance to Partnership Park out off Weaver Pike. The current zoning of the property is county zoning, and then it's R1. All the yellow is R1 in the county. The pink is M2 for the city industrial, some blue up here, MH. PBD3 is a county zoning. This property here is not in the city, but it's on PBD3. So the requested property is in red, and that fits most closely, R1 in the county fits most closely to the R1A city designation. Plan of services, staff has looked at the request and developed a plan of services for the property. Most of these, police, fire, water, streets, electric refuse, all those on this sheet are available upon the effective date of annexation, should it be annexed. The sanitary sewer service, and I'll back up a couple of maps. But there is an existing sanitary sewer line in this vicinity along Weaver Pike. It's about 150 foot of service line that would have to be extended under Weaver Pike to the property. Staff feels like that can be completed in, from material for less than $1,500. That plan of service for the sewer would be, the public sanitary sewer would be extended to the property within one year of the effective date of annexation, and that would be enough time to allow for the appropriate permitting through TDOT and the state for that extension. The next sheet on plan of services, the schools, the, they currently have two children that are tuition students inside the city limits, and this would allow them to attend our schools at no charge. And they would be in the South School District upon the effective date of annexation. The council district they would be assigned to would be the South Council District, and that would be effective on the date of annexation, or that would be available upon the effective date of annexation. Recreation, community development, zoning, all those would, at least the recreation and community development would be available upon the effective date of annexation. The zoning, we are proposing the R1 A-zone for the city because it is most similar to the Sullivan County R1 low density, single family residential development. What the process is, and if you read your memo, it's really annexations, and y'all have been through one last year about this time, actually. But should y'all make a recommendation for the plan of services, and that's what we're asking tonight, is that you all recommend this plan of services to the city council. And then that plan of services is the zoning designation of R1A would be the recommendation we would ask. That would be presented to the council at their February 2nd meeting for, or not February, I'll be all right, March 2nd meeting. I said March 1st, but it should say March 2nd meeting for approval to move forward with the annexation and plan of services. And then after that, we would have to post and put appropriate notification to the public about the annexation. And should city council approve that resolution, a public hearing for both the plan of services and a separate public hearing for annexation would be held at the council's April 6th meeting. And if they approved the annexation at that meeting, it becomes effective immediately. There's no delay for that. At that same April 6th meeting, the city council would be requested on first reading to consider rezoning of the property to R1A, and that would go through the normal rezoning process with the city council. Until the time it does get a zoning designation, should it be annexed into the city, it would come in as our RM zone, our most conservative zone up until the time it is assigned a zoning designation. So with that, I'll try to answer any questions you all may have on this.
Any questions?
What hoops with the state do we have to jump through to, on an annexation like this? Any at all?
Currently, there's two methods to be annexed. One is by resolution, and one is by, or by request, I guess is the best way to say that, by request of the property owner. And the second one way to do that is by referendum. So if we wanted to go out and annex a larger territory, then there is a percentage that would have to pass that in a referendum if they all did not request that annexation. So that is the current two methods to start the annexation process. Each one has their own path to take. And also in that path, it depends on if it's contiguous or non-contiguous. So there are things currently that you can do non-contiguous annexation. It's a different path to follow and a more lengthy process and more involved than a contiguous like this and one y'all did last year with Mr. Boyd on Highway 126. Hopefully that answers you in a nutshell. I think Danielle could probably spend an hour of training on annexation alone easily if you wanted to.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? I guess we need to do a 35 second, 40 second pause again. So if anybody, do we need to?
No, not on this one. No.
Very good. Okay. Any final questions of staff?
Just one, one thing. Just from my petification, the water services by an independent utility and the sewer services by the city, is there some arrangement to get the meter charges for, for the water to accommodate sewer charges?
Yes, we do have agreements with those different utility districts around, or inside the corporate limits already for getting the meter readings. And some, it just depends on how many are located in that utility, utility district. We may actually read those meters for sewer consumption purposes. This depends on the volume in that particular utility. But yes, we do have agreements with all of them. And thank you for mentioning that, Mr. Buck. I forgot to mention that water was, I know it was on the screen, but in the new South Fork Holston or South Fork Utility District, it's a combination of Old Holston Utility District and South Bristol Weaver Pike Utility District. So they merged, and now they're called the South Fork Utility District.
The, the sewer has to go underneath Weaver Pike, correct?
Yes, that's the natural drainage, yes, sir.
Yeah, would, who, who pays for that? The city pay for that construction?
The city would make that installation. The material cost to do that's less than $1,500.
Okay.
And that would be accomplished within one year of the, should the annexation become effective, the one year from the date of the annexation.
This, of course, will be going to city council. Do either one of our city council members have any questions at this time?
No questions, just, it's good to see folks recognizing the services that the city provides and request an annexation.
All right. Can we have a motion then?
I think that was a motion. Motion to accept staff's recommendation on the annexation of 2467 Weaver Pike.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, city council has made a motion and a second.
Looks good, huh?
And so there is a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion of the motion that is on the floor? Roll call.
Kelly Graham.
Yes.
Malin Luttrell.
Yes.
Mark Webb.
Yes.
Margaret Fire Robin.
Yes.
Jason Brewer.
Yes.
Takashi.
Yes.
Joel Staten is yes. Scott Gaynor.
Yes.
Kevin Buck.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Beavers. Is there any other new business that didn't make our agenda?
No, Mr. Chairman, that was all the new business tonight.
Then let's go to other matters. It's you, city council update.
City council update, at their February 2nd meeting, council on first reading passed amendments to the B3 zone to accommodate residential development. That will be on public hearing and second reading at their March 2nd meeting, but they did pass those changes, you're all's recommendation at the council meeting February 2nd on first reading. Also, at that meeting, they considered the rezoning of 362 Bluff City Highway to R3 from R1A. That particular item did not receive a motion to take a vote, so it died from lack of motion. So it was not approved to rezon that property to R3 at that meeting. Now, it wasn't a vote, it just died for lack of motion, which is the same thing as saying no. So.
Did I mishear? Did you say Bluff City Highway?
Or Bluffle Highway, not, sorry.
Okay, I know, okay.
On 126. Bluffle down and still read Bluff City, so. Yeah, that's Highway 126, Bluffle Highway, yes, that property.
The apartments that were going to be part of Shelby Heights.
Ah, I got you. Yeah, okay.
So like I said, that, they, that did not receive a second to the motion, so it died for lack of motion. And that's all the council updates.
Thank you very much. We'll now get into a discussion of adaptive reuse.
And I'll let Sherif Young continue the discussion on looking at potential adaptive reuses of buildings and looking at things like Rosemont Schools, the biggest one out there currently. So with that, Ms. Young.
Thank you, Tim. So tonight, we just wanted to explore this a little bit more and kind of discuss a little more in depth, see what y'all might be thinking after having a month to marinate on this topic. So here are a couple, just a few of these examples in town. We talked some about the old Rosemont School. Specifically because there is a new owner there that does wish to do some things with this building. But there are other examples of commercial structures that are in residential districts that are very often vacant or underutilized that have kind of prompted us to look at these and see if there's any uses that might be worth considering by the planning commission. So what I thought we'd do real quick is just a couple What I thought we'd do real quick is just a couple, I have a couple of slides just to kind of reorient on this. Topic and then have a couple of questions for you all that were included in your memo, uh, to see if we can kind of just. Take this further in discussion and see if there's any interest in pursuing it. Um, so. The R two district and I, R two is just a good example district, the R two and the RE district are um. Fairly similar in terms of uses. Um, not necessarily in terms of setbacks and things like that, but they are um. In terms of uses and they are the districts that are in and around more of our older areas of town or. Somewhat more urban areas of town where you do have some of these structures that exist. I don't know that we have as many examples out in the R one A district. Where you have more of your suburban style of residential development, so. Currently in the R two district, you're allowed to do uh, single family dwelling units, two family residential structures. Um, in the RE district, we also added very recently public parks to that permitted use list. Uses permitted by special use permit, so in the R two district, and this would be the example of the Rosemont School. You can do buildings that house public or private utilities, you can have churches, you can have daycare centers. Hospitals, philanthropic institutions and clubs, and then the private sports clubs. Uh, in the RE district, you cannot do the private sports clubs anymore as of the ordinance work that we undertook last year, so. If you have a vacant old commercial building uh, in the RE or R two district, this is what you're. You're pretty much looking at as far as reusing it. So um, what we did was we looked at some other communities, we looked at Knoxville, we looked at Johnson City. And these two slides, I'll show you Knoxville first, but just give a flavor of how they. Permit some of their non-residential uses in neighborhoods. Um, and what kind of uses they permit, so in Knoxville, um, they allow for art galleries. Um, fitness studios, offices, personal service establishments, and those typically mean like hair salons and things like that. Um, they allow eating and drinking establishments. Um, live entertainment is secondary use is prohibited. So that cuts down on uh, noise problems in neighborhoods. They allow retail goods establishments, and then they allow social service centers. And Johnson City on the next slide, um. They have a concept where they allow non-residential reuse by their special exception process. And they allow it in their R two C low density residential district. Um, they say that it has to be located in a discontinued school or similar public building. And the uses that they allow are libraries, museums, galleries, cultural facilities, offices. And then um, the, or offices and facilities of nonprofit. Um, civic organizations and social service organizations, they do limit. Hours of operation or delivery hours between seven AM and seven PM. And they have some stipulations on parking and then exterior alterations to the building. So these are two. Somewhat nearby examples at least of how other um. Cities in Tennessee deal with these type buildings. So um, we discussed this last month and there was, seemed like some consideration for. Um, definitely talking about this and potentially amending some of our uses. Uh, to allow for these buildings to have some life back in them. Um, I definitely sensed some hesitation with um. Going too far on the multifamily development um, concept. But just wanted to kind of talk about this a little more after you've maybe had a little time to think about it or to notice different buildings as you drive around town. Um, to see if we can kind of narrow down a direction, if there's, if there's still interest in um. Working on an ordinance to allow some adaptive reuse in our residential. Uh, community, so the discussion items that were bulleted in your memo are these that are on the screen. And really just wanted to talk through these points, really number one and two are probably the most um, important at this point. Um, for if residential districts are appropriate, what residential districts are appropriate? Um, is there interest in tailoring this towards um, specific residential zones or looking at a big picture, all residential zones? And then the second bullet is types and intensity of uses, so you saw a couple of examples from Knoxville and Johnson City, but. What kind of, what kind of business use would be appropriate um, in these buildings and some of the. Um, uses here in the uh, bullet are some we pulled from different other places. Um, but schools, libraries, art galleries, museums, office use, uh, limited restaurant use or food service use. Um, could they be used for an event space, so that could be anything from. Uh, weddings, um, community gatherings or uh, like convention meeting space, business meeting space. Um, classroom space, so as a center for um, art, music, dance classes, things like that. Uh, you saw fitness studios in both the other examples, and then is there any um. Opportunity for retail um, space in these buildings? And then once we answer those two bullets, we can talk more about. Some of the specific site limitations that may need to be put in place and look at some of the things like. Parking requirements, lighting, looking at what kind of um, noise might be generated by either. Music, speakers, outdoor dining, things like that, and if we would need to restrict hours of operation. Once we figure that out, um, I think some other things that we need to look at is, you saw the Knoxville and Johnson City. Um, examples, they're only for existing buildings, a reuse of existing buildings, so is that what we would want to do? Would you consider any kind of new construction? And then if new construction is considered or allowed, um, should some sort of design standard apply, so. Not to necessarily suggest that the design standards that have already been adopted would be the right design standards, maybe you would. Um, desire something that would be even more compatible with a residential area, but just something for us to consider as we. Um, work through this or talk through this. So with that, that's the, the goal of tonight is just to see if we can get a little further down the road. Um, with taking your house temperature on this topic. Um, and once we get a little bit of guidance from you, then we could start putting together. Um, kind of the framework of what an ordinance could look like.
Okay, why don't we just open the floor up for discussion then?
Yeah, I feel in general, uh, try to, you know, you know, do something with that building is a good idea. Um. Versus tearing it down, I mean, the old building seemed like from the outside, it looks pretty structurally sound. And uh, you know, has, has a little bit of history to it. Um, just exactly what to put in it, that's, that's the big question. Uh, it sounds like there's an owner that's potentially interested in doing something with it already. Um, so, you know, maybe if, if they could share some of their, their thoughts as to what they're thinking about, it may create. Um, some idea generation from us.
I would, uh, Jason Boer, I would like to look at a broader scope of opening it up and not limiting it other than. Perhaps putting a lot of the acceptable uses under a special use permit category. Uh, so that um, we open up to the city. A broad variety of buildings, not just one particular building that may be on the horizon or being looked at currently. Um, a- and uh, when you look at the special use, it gives a chance to, to say, well, that would fit there. Uh, or it wouldn't fit there. And definitely think, eh, when you look at those situations, you can consider the, the environment that the, the property is located in, if it's going to be. Uh, a use that would be disruptive to surrounding property owners and, and uses of those properties. Specifically residential properties. Um, uh, you know, in restaurants, uh, uh, under certain restrictions and, and special use. Uh, I think some of the properties we have are suited for that, that I've, I've seen throughout the city. Uh, others like the old Rosemont School uh, would be more acceptable or eh, for maybe a fitness studio or a gym or. A, a meeting venue of the like, so all those options I think would be appropriate to, to place in the ordinance. Um, but uh, you know, when you talk about blighted. Properties that have, are, are, are sitting there not being used or utilized and, and are not doing anything to improve property values for the neighborhood they're. Located in, um, I'm definitely in favor of, of enhancing not only the city uh, as a whole, but the, the neighborhoods that those properties are located in.
So I think um, I would like to see some of that flexibility, Jason, like what you've said, where we can. Um, see what applies to a specific um, building for use and personally like uh, Rosemont, I think. Um, residential could be appropriate there, multifamily. If it were limited just to the existing building, it would not be able to have a huge number. So it wouldn't be um, terribly out of character, it's that area's single family, but not too far away or. Condos along Broad Street and the Shelby Heights, so there's multifamily in the, in the area. Um, also, I would think considering uh, even a restaurant in residential, if you look at. Some of the older cities um, have um, resident. Restaurants in residential, if we can limit deliveries and garbage pickup and. Different things where it doesn't intrude on the neighborhood, um, and that we can consider, have, have regs that are flexible enough that we can really take them into consideration and. Um, etcetera, so anyway, that's not real helpful to be in definitive, just pretty broad stroke.
Other thoughts?
Yeah, I um. What, what kind of inventory are we talking about here, I mean, all I hear is Rosemont School. Um, you know, on that first slide, you had three, three pictures and. Quite honestly, two of them should probably be torn down. Um, I just, I just wonder how applicable this is across, across the city. Um, I mean, I know, I guess on Anderson Street there and, and that. Uh, that, that may be the area where you're thinking, um, but, you know, I try to think of. My area over here at Fairmount and, and other parts of the city where I, other residential areas and I, I can't see. Having, you know, commercial in these residential areas. It, it's just, it would really change the character of the, of the uh. Of, of the residential neighborhood and, and I agree with, you know, with Margaret, I've said, I've been in cities where they have that interspersed, but. It was kind of the hair for, for almost a century, so it, that's the character of the neighborhood, but. I think, you know, you say, well, we're gonna put a restaurant right next to your house, I can't see a lot of people wanting that. Um. So I, I guess my, my question is, I mean, are we trying to solve a problem that doesn't quite exist, or is it just for this one, one situation?
Scott, in response, I would say we're not trying to solve a problem, we're trying to create opportunity. And you don't know what that opportunity is until you uh, restrict, eliminate the restrictions. That currently exist and I think city's government's role is to foster development in the appropriate way. You know, I look at uh, Asheville, throughout the city of Asheville, uh, one specific neighborhood is the Montford Historic District. Um, a lot of historic homes and some of those homes have been repurposed and other buildings have been repurposed as restaurants and other. Uh, type uses, uh, if you go to Charlotte, North Carolina, you see that throughout the city. And then you also see it in East Nashville, for example, there's a lot of restaurants and mixed use in East Nashville. And uh, one of the things that happens with that mixed use in those neighborhoods is, it, it, I mean, it's a rising tide and it raises all ships. And to, to speak to the issue of wanting a restaurant next to a, a residential development, I think that's where. The flexibility, uh, that, as Margaret put it, is, is needed, um, and the caution and, and, and. So that we can consider a special use permit, so it may be, and if there's a lot of resistance in that neighborhood to that particular development, we can say no. Um, and not just an automatic yes based on the zoning, but. Um, I mean, I, I've traveled a lot and I've seen it where adaptive reuse has. Like I said, a rising tide raises all ships for that neighborhood.
Well, I mean, I mean, that. A- again, I mean, the, those neighborhoods have had it. Um, I mean, then what's the point of having zoning?
Those were, those were adaptive reuses he's talking about.
Yeah, but I mean, then what's the point of having rezoning, I mean zoning? If, if somebody can, I mean, what we're talking about here is having business and commercial in residential.
So Scott, the reason why that, that doesn't exist now, it's in our older cities is because. S- city councils and planning commissions like us zoned them out. So this is an opportunity to perhaps zone them back in, and if you look at the. Studies of some of those um, older cities with the mixed use, the neighborhoods love having their neighborhood restaurant, their neighborhood store. They, it builds community, it's pretty cool stuff. Um, and we have um, Troutdale is uh, our neighborhood restaurant that probably was residential until. They put their restaurant in, so, but what Jason's talking about are new adaptive reuse is not. New Orleans that has stuff that's been there for a hundred years or whatever in, in the neighborhood. Um, so I like it, saying it's opportunities, Jason.
Well, I, I mean, I'm just gonna tell you, I don't think putting a restaurant in the middle of a, a residential, I mean, I, I live right here next to. Maryland and, and Taylor and those giant houses. And to say, well, we're gonna turn those into a restaurant, uh, no. Um, I mean, I, I don't, I, I couldn't support something like that.
Scott, I, I can remember a few years back, within three blocks of the old Fairmount. There was three neighborhood stores that existed. Within three blocks of Fairmount.
Yeah, well, I mean, within a block, you have the, you have the Fairmount garage, right, I mean.
But, well, just over from it, there is a Miss Pates. Then uh, over on, I think it was Cypress, just off Georgia, there was one. And then uh, there's one on Florida Avenue near Cedar Street.
But I guess, I guess my question is, what's the need for this? I mean, I, I've, I've heard many times that we have a lack of housing. And yet we're talking about turning housing into businesses i- in residential neighborhoods, I, I, I mean.
We're, we're talking about multifamily also. And some of these, like Rosemont, could be a combined use.
I think it's a good step to be proactive, uh, Scott, we've got two churches now that are empty that. People are gonna be asking what they can do with a whole city.
There was a church in um, Jonesboro, I'm not sure what its use is now, but it became a, a restaurant, Parsons Table.
Widow.
Parsons Table, and then there was Widow's something too.
But, you know, I think Scott, to answer your question, uh, again, and, and I think you're kind of getting the cart before the horse, I don't think anybody's saying we're gonna throw every. Uh, every zone open to anything and everything, and that automatically somebody that lives. In a residential zone that they're, they're, the, the joining house that happens to be vacant or building, what are old school, whatever it may be, is something that is automatically gonna become something. That that neighborhood doesn't want, uh, I think it's, it's more. We'll wait and see and we'll consider those on a case by case basis. And a- again, the opportunity, because I, I assure you, if you went back to the Montford Historic District in Asheville. Uh, I don't know how long, far back you would have to go, but you go back far enough and I'm sure the, the, the residential area and the owners of those properties would have. Would have cringed the thought of a restaurant or anything other than residential being there. Uh, and now, it's, it's a draw, it's, it's, I've got within walking distance of my home a place to go. And, 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 and a quality of life issue, and that, and I think that's where. The focus should be as these issues are considered is, it, does it improve quality of life for those residential areas? If it is a residential area indeed, and it may not necessarily always be. Um, and you know, and what's the difference in the, the traffic that comes in and out of a school uh, on a daily basis? of a school on a daily basis and perhaps some other use? So I, I, I think saying and having resistance to the opportunity, and I agree with everything Margaret said, is, is not looking toward how times have changed and how the interest and what draws people to a community and in their investment in that community and that neighborhood. I think we've got to be open to the, the fact that we don't want to just throw everybody out, you know, and say, hey, you're going to have to have this and you, you don't have a say. No, everybody does get a chance to say something at some point during the, the request. And if it's permissible, if it's appropriate, and it does improve quality of life, then I think that's where we need to be.
Well, I guess the devil's in the details. I mean, Sherif has the questions, which residential districts? And what I've heard you say is all of them. What, what uses? Basically just about everything. So I, I mean, I, again, how many, how many people are coming to the city and saying, hey, I want to turn this house into a restaurant? And I, I mean, I, I know we have schools and we have built churches, but that, I mean, sometimes you got to knock these things down and develop other things. I, I mean, just because it's an old school, I, I mean, what's the cost of refurbishing that to bring it up to code? I, I mean, there's a reason that thing sat empty for a long time. You know, I, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, but that's just the way it is some days. And saying, well, we're gonna, we're gonna change, you know, our zoning to allow, you know, a restaurant or a bodega or, you know, a convenience store to go into a little residential neighborhood. I, I don't, I don't see the need for it, to be honest. Anyway, that's my thought.
I would take the counterpoint on knocking buildings down. I think if you're gonna look at quality of life and destroying a neighborhood, knocking the character of that neighborhood down is, is detrimental. It's not, it's not an improvement. It's not a rising tide. It's, it's a sinking ship. And, you know, Margaret referenced Jay Frank or, or what was the Troutdale for years. And right across the street from it is the YMCA. You know, there's mixed use already, but it's by zone. And, and again, I'm not saying that you just automatically say that you get to do whatever you want to do. But, you know, to say, you know, there's no demand for it. Where's the demand? Why are we not doing, why are we not seeing developers come in and offer this at this point? Well, I would submit because we don't have the opportunity for them to do so because of zoning. And I think we should open it up.
So also, a couple of things. One is, I think, thinking about houses becoming restaurants, that's not what applies here. We're talking about adaptive reuse of buildings that have had other uses, not of houses. That's a whole nother opportunity or ballgame or whatever. But the other is, some of these, like if you look at the churches and you look at Rosemont School, so some of the ones have quite a bit of land around them. So that gets into whether you allow any new construction, but it also may mean that there's a little more breathing room for the neighborhood. So it's not having a restaurant that's within yards or whatever of your home. It gives some buffer with just the size of, of the lot. And I'd say a fair number also are on corners of streets that kind of sets it up to be a little bit more adaptive to a different use with traffic, et cetera, with being on a corner.
Other thoughts?
I've got a couple, and I'm not really sure how to tie it all together. And I'm not saying, no, I'm against anything like this. But I have some thoughts. And one is, in my mind, why would I vote to allow something on a piece of property, whether there's a building there or not, if I wouldn't vote to allow a rezone to the proper zoning needed to put said business or residential on that particular property otherwise? In other words, if it was a vacant piece of land and somebody came to us and asked for a rezone so that they could build multifamily, they could build a restaurant, they could build a convenience store, would that be the appropriate rezoning? And the other thing that I'm kind of concerned about is somebody coming, they've got a particular building, they've got a particular project they want to do, they're coming to planning commission, they're coming to city council, and you've got planning commission and city council picking winners and losers. And a lot of times it may have something to do with who knows who and how well connected they are. And I hate putting planning commission and city council in a position to say no to a friend. And you could have that going on. That, I don't know how to resolve all of that, but those are some of the thoughts I've got in my brain.
So staff can answer that probably better, Kelly, but that's where, if you have criterias and process, that at least tries to make it more equitable. So.
Well, I think.
And to go back to what Scott was saying, the devil's in the details. And, you know, I, I was throwing a pretty well hide blanket out there. The devil's always in the details. And so, yes, I mean, we would need to carve out and work with and, and consider the details of what's appropriate where. But I was just saying broader application than maybe was intended in the first concept of the proposal.
And I think what staff and what we've been looking at, Rosemont's the prime example. There are other vacant buildings in residential areas, commercial or use something other than for residential is, how do y'all feel about letting those be reused for anything other than what the residential zoning, even Rosemont, I mean, is that something you all want us to look at? I mean, we don't have to look at it and leave it like it is. I think ultimately what happens is those buildings at some point are going to have to be torn down by somebody or the city typically ends up doing that is they get into disrepair and people can't afford to tear those buildings down. But that's our question, you all. And I mean, Joel, what do you think?
Well, I can see some opportunities in some of the districts like Fairmount using some of those small buildings that have sat vacant for all this time.
How about you, Dr. Webb?
I like the idea of, of looking into what can be done and listening to people who want to, to try to do something with what's there. I don't want to shut the door on any opportunity. I've seen in other cities where some of these, like a converted church into a restaurant. Oh, man, it was packed. I mean, it was done nice. It was in a neighborhood. I, I just think that we should keep our eyes and ears open to any kind of opportunity to, to use facilities like that that have been in the neighborhood for years.
Kevin Buck?
Yeah, I think I would like to encourage reuse of structures and, and I don't really care what district they're in or, or what the purpose is. But I would not like to see new construction allowed if you're going to reuse the existing either institutional or commercial structure for something that fits with that fine. But, but I don't, I don't, reuse is one thing, but a, a new construction, I don't think fits with our, with the core purpose of our zoning.
Mayor Muckler?
I think in general, I spoke earlier that if we can repurpose a, an old building, I think we should. There are certain uses that fit in certain areas and some that don't. But I think we owe it to our community to be very open minded with some of these.
Takashi, do you have any thoughts?
I agree with pretty much the overall sentiment of reuse. I'll just have a little bit of reservation with regards to having our thumb on the scale. And I don't, I can't see how we could avoid it. And I'm not completely opposed to the, the concept.
With that information, if everybody wants us, the staff, you know, we can start trying to craft some ideas together to, for you all to look at for reuses potential with different zonings. It will take, you know, it's not something we'll come back with next month, but certainly we can start putting that together and letting us look at those ideas and opportunities if you would like.
I, the areas of where Weaver Funeral Home and Burr, Burr, Burrwell Construction, those are reused homes, big homes that had been added on to. That's, that's, they're, they're beautiful.
At some point, and I don't know what timeframe, those were rezoned from probably a residential district into a B one B. I think those areas are zoned, some of them. But yes, there's opportunity. And I guess that's how in the past, the city dealt with that area was to rezone it to some commercial type use in that area. The same you could say for Alabama Street, you know, how those have repurposed some of those homes over in that area. And the, the thing, you know, once again, it's the perpetual, what do you do with the churches and schools and other that used to be commercial when the neighborhoods supported more commercial, you know, grocery stores, neighborhood stores, things that serve that neighborhood when it wasn't so easy to get in your car and drive across town to get somewhere. And what do you do with those buildings ultimately? How do you try to repurpose them or not a city and community? What do they want those to opportunities to be for those structures? So.
Well, I was intrigued by the Johnson City line, that it had to be a former school or something to that effect. Is, would it be appropriate to think in terms of, if nothing else, just start off with schools and churches? And then try to maybe craft something that would work to the reuse of former schools and former churches? I, I don't know. I'm, I'm asking.
We certainly could start with those opportunities. That's what everybody would like. I mean, that's not a problem to focus in just on schools and churches right now. Didn't look at expanding possibly to other older commercial buildings, you know, used to be commercial buildings in those zones. So.
Hey, Tim, is there any way we can get an inventory of how many vacant churches and old schools are within Bristol, Tennessee city limits for us to kind of get a better idea?
Yes. And what we can look at is putting together a map or a vacant, what would be non-residential type buildings in residential zones. And if that would be helpful for you all, we can do.
I, I think the way I would look at it, if something came in front of us, the, the test that I would give it, okay, what if I live next door to this? Would I be good with it? And a lot of these houses that have been turned into restaurants and the churches been turned into restaurants, I've been to several of them. They are, they're nice and they're quaint. And as a customer, I enjoy them. As the next door neighbor, I'm not sure I would have.
So I, I think what we can do and we'll work on is putting that map together and then.
So Kelly, what kind of test would you put?
I don't know. And that, that gets to the thing where we're picking winners and losers.
Yeah, see, and I was trying to avoid.
And I, and I don't like that idea. And, and I think your suggestion and request of let's look at an inventory just on schools and churches right now might answer some questions for us.
Yeah. And actually, Kelly, you know, what you just said, I mean, I heard Mark say, yeah, they turned an old church into a restaurant and it was packed.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, I mean, that, that's my point, right? I mean, do you want 50 cars in your, 20 cars in your neighborhood? You know, I, I mean, I, I just, anyway, it, that. Yeah, I know. But, but I mean, do you want, I mean, do you want all those cars in your neighborhood at 10 o'clock at night? You know, I, I mean, that, that's the point, right? And, and, but I, I, I agree with Takai, you know, having an inventory not only of, of vacant, but current schools and stuff. Because, you know, if we're talking about the future, then we should be able to look at what's there today and what may be available for this, for this application.
I would like to see us keep an open mind and, and look at the issue as we go forward. My opinion has changed many times on issues as they've come before the planning commission based on discussion that's been held here and further consideration. But don't want to kill anything before we get started. And, you know, as far as putting a thumb on the scale and, and picking winners and losers, then we kind of already, to some degree, do that with rezoning requests and special use permits.
Yep.
Every day.
Yep.
It's probably part of the reason that at least Johnson City chose the special exception or special use permit route, because then you do have, and I'm not saying it has to be the same, or it maybe doesn't need to be beefed up, but you, you are able to review a project against a criteria that has been established, where you can say, does it need buffering? Is the dumpster in a weird location? Is the parking going to bother the neighbors? You have the opportunity to comment or reject the application based on a, a set of criteria. Because I know that people, I mean, I've heard people say to you all, you know, you wouldn't want to live next to this, be it a special use permit request or rezoning. So that does happen. But I think that's the, that's probably part of the method of at least Johnson City with a, a, a special use type criteria, because then you do have an established list to go through to say, how is this going to fit in or not fit in with the neighborhood?
Perhaps I shouldn't have used the, the term restaurant. It seems to be the focus now. There's a lot of other things that we're talking about, art museums and everything else. And so I, I don't want us to focus on restaurants. Hopefully that's not, that was not what I intended for us to do. But, but there's obviously, and you know, you look at a, you know, there was a church that just recently, a historic church in Bristol that just closed Windsor Presbyterian or somewhere in there. You know, if you were to say, all right, I'm, I'm just speaking hypothetically, I'm not, a bakery, a coffee shop versus a full blown breakfast, lunch and dinner restaurant, you know, or, you know, turning it into, you know, a three unit apartment or, or, or a single family dwelling, or an art museum, or a whole, or a lot of diff, or, or both, absolutely. So, I mean, again, I hope we don't close the door on something before we have a chance to weigh it out.
I agree with Jason. I think we, we need to look, I, I think every, every neighborhood has specific buildings that, that fit into the neighborhood and, and planning commission could look at each opportunity that's proposed by somebody and, and yes or no it, or advise one way or the other.
I think looking at an inventory would be very helpful. Schools and churches and maybe even some, some larger, if there are such things, larger commercial type buildings that were in existence before zoning came in. And Joel, I think that's the, the neighborhood market you were talking about. Those were probably there before the zoning came into play. But now would come into play in what we're talking about because they now have residential zoning sitting on top of them. So I, I, I think it would help us if we did know how many buildings we're talking about that would fall into this ballot process.
Yes, certainly. We can gather that data and get pictures of the different ones on top of the map. So we will work on gathering that inventory.
So Mr. Chairman, before y'all move to the next issue, I'm going to excuse myself because I am with a new grandbaby and gonna say goodbye to y'all to be able to help with late evening, middle evening restlessness, et cetera. So I will watch the section on the, the next section on signage to keep up.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Margaret, is, is there any coincidence of fact, the next thing up is signage?
I'm sure glad that the, the reuse was before the signage. So just, just a little history on that. So.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
And thank you for the picture, Margaret.
Okay, see you later. Bye.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on this? Does, uh, staff have something to run with now?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think we have some things to start getting to you all on this.
Sheriff, is there something you wanted to say on this? All right.
We'll keep running.
All right. Let's go to discussion on signs.
Let me catch up slideshow here. Uh, just, uh, it's been, uh, probably a year somewhere in that neighborhood since we've discussed signs, everybody's favorite topic, but y'all have done a lot of work in the past year with a lot of regulations. So don't think we dropped signage because of it being a hot topic. It was really because y'all have done a ton of work on regulations and very much appreciate all the, uh, time and effort spent in all those different regulation. So, but it is time we bring signage back up and try to put this to bed because of the different, uh, judicial rulings that have came out in the past. So with that, I'll let Ms. Young run through a presentation and really tonight, not really wanting to talk a lot about them, believe it or not, but just to get you all thinking again and toss out some, a couple of food for thought things for you all for when we do get this back in front of you as we work through these regulations. Sheriff.
Thank you. All right. Somebody else have a newborn to run and take care of really quick? Where we do signs, excuses. All right. Oh, so like Tim said, I mean, we did do a whole bunch of work last year on, um, different ordinances and we did, as far as signs go, um, solve, uh, the electronic message board issue. And we also did a bunch of work on our billboards section of the sign ordinance. So we have done some, um, sign work for sure this past year. But if you remember back to about a year ago, um, we were talking some in our discussion period of the planning commission meetings. Um, about temporary signs, because that was kind of a focus of that, um, Reed versus Gilbert Supreme Court case. Um, that, that really threw all communities into, um, the effort to try to solve their sign. Sign concerns and I won't get into it and Danielle, um, can at some point if we need to refresh on this topic, but basically um, the, the scope of our discussion was to look at our temporary sign regulations and to regulate them as temporary signs based on, um, definable items such as setbacks, size, materials, things like that versus what the content of the sign said. So trying to get away from saying, oh, it's a real estate sign, so it can be this big. Or, oh, it's a, um, uh, you know, roofing company sign that somebody just had their house roofed. So it's a more of a marketing sign, it can be this big. And our, our goal was to get away from that and to, to develop more concrete, um, parameters for what temporary signs are and what temporary signs could be where. So the discussion, uh, we really focused on, um, was on the screen and, and then we ended up, believe it or not, January of 2020, um, we ended up at this point, which is, we had decided that in residential zones, you could have three signs, commercial zones, you could have one sign per hundred linear feet of road frontage. And we had just, we had kind of set up some maximum size, um, sign areas of just six square feet in residential zones. Um, and then you could scale the size sign in commercial or industrial zones based on how big the property is. And we talked about maximum height and then we talked about setbacks and spacing. So we really, like Tim said tonight, I don't think that, that, um, the goal is to solve this, but to just kind of get reacquainted with this topic so we can, um, solve it hopefully soon, because I know everybody would like to get this behind them, stop talking about signs. Um, but really we just wanted to kind of get your feel on, on this topic again. Um, these items that you have on the screen right here, see if we're still comfortable with those and/or get you all to guide us on how we can, um, best provide new information or, um, changes to, to kind of get this going again.
Yeah, what we would really staff at this point, you know, we want to just craft the regulation based on what you see on the screen in general and make sure with Danielle that, uh, we haven't done something that's against the current, uh, legal system. That have been put out there, rulings that have been put out there. The one, the staff that we really though want to talk ultimately and just be thinking about this again, and we're going to try to get a good picture of this and to represent it, but the one that really gives us some angst and we've seen it because of, uh, you know, there's a lot of stick-up signs out right now because of COVID and people want, we wanted to be more flexible. Just because we want people that are open, people to understand that they're open during the trying times that we've had in the past year, but is the commercial of one sign per every hundred feet. And we're going to try to get some good graphics and do some mock staging for those. That is a lot of signs on some properties. I mean, on smaller properties, understand that, but, uh, current regs, you can't have the stick-up signs in the, uh, commercial areas. You could, you know, currently there are some signs that violate the current rulings out of the court system, but that you were allowed, but stick-up signs, we're not one of those, the little pushing the ground stick-up signs with our current regulations, but we still, when we started seeing some signs pop up, like I said, over the past year with, uh, COVID, that it really brought our attention that one sign per hundred linear foot is a lot of signs on a commercial property. And we are going to try to get some graphics to illustrate that point to you all for next meeting, just to make sure, but unless y'all, besides that one point that we just want to try to do some illustrations for y'all, unless y'all have some angst about any of the things you all see here, you know, that, uh, we would like to go ahead and start crafting the reg, drafting the reg based on this or any other inputs you may have. Uh, if you want, you know, email that input to us, call us, talk to us about it. Um, so we can, uh, start crafting that and, um, said unless you have something specific tonight, really didn't want to drag you all into a discussion, not knowing how long the other items would take, uh, tonight. So was trying not to keep you all, uh, three hours, but we can work on that and work harder at doing that if you'd like. But, uh, just tonight, if you see anything that pops out or have any thoughts, certainly glad to hear them tonight, but otherwise, if you could call us, look at this slide, you know, um, just think about it. I'll get Sheriff to email this slide out to everybody tomorrow. Uh, so that, uh, y'all have this one slide, but that is where we left it back last year. So. Questions, discussion items?
I have a question and I will, um, preface my question with a remark that I have a lot of experience with temporary signs in another life, uh, that I live. Um, it's very controversial, uh, and, um.
Yes, Jason.
Permitted, permitted uses, uh, I'm not the sign enforcer though, and that's, um, the one thing that I, uh, but I still get a lot of phone calls, a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails, uh, complaints about the temporary signage that I'm familiar with. And so my question is, uh, you know, and you referenced Tim, and I don't want to get in the weeds tonight, um, and I don't want to drag us there, but um, you referenced the once every, you know, temporary sign every hundred feet. To me, that seems, uh, a bear, a very difficult task for enforcement. I mean, are you, I mean, and a hundred feet is something I'm very familiar with as well. Just by chance, um, uh, boundary lines, but, um, you know, as we look at this, how difficult is the enforcement? I mean, I, I've read through and tried to follow the best I could. That's a very extensive in-depth, uh, ordinance as it pertains to signage. And at what point does it get so much of a burden for not only the staff to enforce, but for the, the person who's placing the sign to, um, to understand what the restrictions are. I mean, you know, I was looking at the two banner limit and seven days prior to the event. Are we, you know, are we out there calculating days? I, I mean, I, I, so I think as we move forward, if y'all are looking at temporary signage, I think enforcement should be something that, i- i- so that it's consistent and it's not something that staff is consistently applied and it doesn't burden staff to the point to where they're out there stepping off or met with a measuring wheel a hundred feet. Um, uh, and I know there has to be some limits, but you know, like you said, a hundred feet's a lot of signs. Maybe it becomes two or 300 feet, uh, so that you're not stepping off as many.
Well, I think, uh, to answer your question, certainly what we're trying to do with the regulations of one is because of the rulings that have came down about signage and content-based signage is to, uh, make sure our ordinances are consistent with that. Y'all had some documents that, uh, we sent you all, Sheriff, that sent you to read through on some of that information, but from a staff standpoint, it's easier to regulate the number and size of signs. Then are they every hundred feet or every 200 feet or? And what we see with commercial is, you know, how many, you've already probably have a free standing sign advertising what you're doing there. Probably have a sign on your, you know, if you're a strip center, have one on your facade. Your commercial, you might have both if you're a complex, but you know, what we're looking at here is like the now hire, you know, anything that you could put on there. It's can't be content-based. It's not political signs that we're trying to regulate. Those are regulated by the state. So they don't really come into play with us and you know, all about those political signs. Uh, just as long as they're off the right of way, we're good. So, uh, what we are trying to do is where you see the now hirings, the not special events like grand openings, you can have a separate thing for things like that. But like now hirings, real estate signs would fall into that category. So automatically, you know, you chalk off for a commercial one sign, cause if they have their property for sale, I mean, you would, uh, they could have one sign. Now you can't regulate the content on that. So you let them have two signs in case they're selling their property and they want to have a now hiring or something else there. So like I said, for us in general, it's much easier to regulate the total number of signs and the square footage of the size. And we're trying to craft these regulations to make them easier for people to understand them. And then make it like you said, easier for us to enforce. I mean, that's our whole intent with this process of, uh, going through, plus we have to do something on our sign regulations because of the regulations that have been down from the court system.
Um, just, I was, I read that commercial, uh, industrial zone sign limit differently as not as being having to be a hundred feet apart, but that you got a sign for every hundred feet of road frontage.
And that could be a lot of signs once again. I mean, and if y'all are happy with that.
But, but the way I read it, I mean, the way I would read it is they could be next to each other and that would be fine as long as they didn't exceed 32 square feet in size. Or, or 48, depending on how big the property is.
And it could be written that way, that the total amount of signs could exceed certain amount. You know, of all the signs you put up, I mean, there's several ways to craft that, but we were getting a little concerned about this, some of the, you know, the amount of signs that could be placed on a property if it had a lot of road frontage. And one way to limit that would be the total square foot of all signage could be whatever it is, the number applicable to that. So like I said, currently we don't allow the, there are some signs that are allowed without a permit, but the permitted signs, we don't allow the stick-up signs. So.
In, in following up where, where Kevin was just going with that, let's assume a piece of property is eligible for two, um, 32 square foot signs. Um, can they be within a hundred feet of each other? Or do they have to be spaced out far enough? And then the other question that I've seen as I look at this, um, I think I know why, but tell me why the five foot from the property line.
Uh, that's our current setback regulation for signs. And most of the time on your commercial property, it is to improve site distance for entrances. Uh, where cars are pulling out so that you're not blocking those site distances. Should the right of way be closer to the edge of pavement in some areas than others? You know, your bullet corridors, the right of way is so far back that it's probably not as you know, concerning, but some of your like, uh, King College Road, some of those where the right of ways closer to the, uh, you know, to the edge of pavement, I guess is the best way to say that. It might pose some issue there with site distance and safety, vehicular safety. So.
Well, see my concern on that was, and just exactly what you were referencing, some of the setbacks, you, you would not realize how far back the setbacks are. And then if you've got to go five foot back from that, um, you're, you're way off of the road.
Well, it's just our current sign regs had five foot and, you know, five foot's not too far back. Uh, it's, once again, the needs of regulations, five foot from the property line for those. I mean, that's just an ease of regulation. When we go down and look and see if signs are in the right of way, the temporary signage, you know, basically we're looking at the back of the, where the power poles are and not really the, ultimately the right of way line, because I don't want to go look at that. So it's easy to say when we're driving down a corridor, you know, if you're in front of the power poles, you're probably on the right of way. So, but our current signs are the five foot, uh, setback on all our signage, permanent signage that's permitted. So it's just like a building setback or any other setback you have. I mean, if the right of way is far enough back, does it really matter if it's setting up on the right of way of the building or not in a B three? If it's closer or I mean, trends are to push those buildings. People won't, if it's a walkable sidewalk, they want to have those buildings up closer to the road than further back. Some people, developers, but that's why the five foot, there's nothing magic about the five foot, other than that's what's in currently in our regulations. So if y'all chose, you could make it zero feet setback.
I think you need to be a certain feet behind either the sidewalk or the end of pavement. Um.
Well, it has to be off the right of way, 100%. So you couldn't use that measurement. You'd have to say, yeah, not in the right of way. And then if you wanted a setback from a property line, you could establish one or not. You could have a zero. You could have it at five, you could have a 10 for different zones. You could have different setbacks like we do for buildings. I mean, there's just an unlimited, it's just the desire of the planning commission, what they want to do on those setbacks.
See, I'm thinking about some of the setbacks on Voluntary Parkway. They're, they're humongous. And then you got to go even, even further back than that. And, um, it, it, you could lose the effect of the sign because it's just too far away. I understand staying out of the right of way.
Right.
That's done.
But that's totally up to the planning commission as far as setbacks on signs. You know, that's a recommendation y'all could make, have. If you want zero, we can put zero in there. That would be up to you all.
I mean, I think capture what I was saying earlier, I'm for easy. Uh, for staff, for the property owner. Sometimes and fair, and sometimes that's going to be to the disadvantage of one side or the other, but you know, easy and fair, uh, with all reasonableness is something that should be the goal, not complex. And to kind of your argument or your questions, uh, Mr. Chairman, you know, five feet from the setback. Well, if you do that, you got to determine what the setback is first, then you got to measure five feet. And as you said, you're, so, you know, why don't I just make it the setback? I mean, you know, and, and I, I'm saying that without saying I'm, I'm not saying. you know, and, and I, I'm saying that without saying I'm, I'm not saying I'm for that right now, but I'm, I'm saying that makes more sense to me than starting to have to, to measure something out, um.
Well, I've been outside of the setback before and I've still had the phone call, hey, would you mind moving your sign back? And because of a sight line, and that's what you do. You relocate your sign. You, you definitely want to make sure you're avoiding any sight lines for anybody turning out on the street. You gotta do that. And, and I think that's part of the purpose of going the five foot.
It's totally up to you all. That's just what's been on the books for a long time. I mean, if you want it zero, it can be zero. There's nothing magic about that number that I can tell you that's gonna work better than other numbers.
Is, is the five feet working now?
That's what our current permitted signs have been required for a long time, the five feet, yes, it is.
Doctor Webber, you asking me or him?
Well, uh, i- i- if it's working now, just leave it alone. Kelly, is it working?
Um, some places, absolutely. Some places that'd be too far, quite honestly.
Five feet?
Well, I think if you were to, and I don't know that you can word this, um, if you were to do a, uh, out of the right-of-way, of course, um, but then as long as it's not blocking the sight line, uh, or creating a, a visual situation for somebody making a turn, um, that, uh, I don't know if you could write that in there or not. But I've had to move signs before for that very reason.
They were, where they were within five feet, but they were in, blocking a sight line, is that what, is it?
Well, yeah, somebody said, hey, man, I'm having a hard time, and so I fixed it. Um, and it was outside the right-of-way. As far as the five foot, I'm not really sure about that.
I said, there's nothing magic about five feet. That's just, it, it's been that way a long time's all I know. Probably that way before y'all changed the sun regs the last time substantially, I would say it was five feet. Then on a corner, it's ten feet if you're with, you know, and once again, that goes for sight distance. I can see why they put that, but.
Yeah.
It just, the way it's been written, I mean, there's nothing magic. There are, I think the city's, uh, code of ordinances has a, um, section in there about sight distance on placing things that block sight distance, be it residential property or commercial property.
It, if it hasn't created too much of a problem, I'd say leave it alone. We're all used to it.
Well, what we do, like I said, we'll craft something up, I mean, on the reg and start working on that, uh. We'll have questions along the way for you all, you know, when we look at things and we'll pose those to you. Once again, Sheriff can send this slide out and if y'all think of something, you know, driving around and think of something, shoot us a question, give us a phone call and uh, we can discuss it or try to incorporate your thoughts into the regu- any regulation there, but the ultimate goal is to allow maximum flexibility for people in signage and making it easy on staff and the public to understand the sign regulations, plus being within what's been, uh, placed on us from a judicial standpoint. And everybody, not just us, but in general, the, uh, rulings that have come down through the, uh, court system on signage, so.
So next month, you're gonna bring us some examples?
Yeah, we'll try to, uh, do some images on some things, maybe take some photos around of signage right now and, uh, show y'all some pictures.
Okay, what else you need from us tonight on signage?
Uh, nothing unless y'all want to talk about signs more.
That's up to Kevin.
Uh, I'm, I'm willing to talk about signs about as much as I've talked about signs so far.
Alright, does anybody else want to say anything? Then we, we look forward to next month where we'll discuss it some more. Training update.
Alright, right now, here's your little training sheet in your packet. I see one hour for Taka.
Over a cheever.
He went and watched, he watched the BZA training that's online. And you have a link that's real easy to do, just eat lunch and watch it, and then we can put everybody down for an hour, but you're almost, uh, fifteen percent into the, uh, calendar year, hard to believe. Uh, so please make sure to get your four hours or three hours and then we'll do property right training. And if y'all have any ideas, once again, for some in-house training that you'd like to see, certainly shoot us an email and we can, uh, put that, see if we can put that together and do, uh, in-house, something in-house besides property rights, so. That's it on training. Way to go to Taka. We appreciate it.
Is there anything else we need you to discuss tonight from anybody?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, I think that's everything we have staff-wise.
Okay, anything from planning commission members? Alright, we're adjourned.
Thank you all.
Very much.